Mr. Murphy's getting his. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and we will approve them as we present. How many of you have a question? Oh, there you go. You didn't have time to that question. Madam Clerk, please tell the role.
Mr. Green, Mr. Lyda, Dr. Middlebrooks, Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Posey.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Stevens. Here. Green is only twelve fourteen, ain't proved to Mike Huckabee. So he may have a number of our national questions answered when he gets back. Madam Clerk, can you please invoke the prayer and Mr. Posey?
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for the gift of this day and the many blessings you give us each and every day. We pray for all present here tonight, for all the prayers in their hearts, for those who are grieving loss of a loved one, we pray that you would give them peace. We pray for continued blessings on this city and we ask that you would bestow your wisdom to God as all this mayor and council and all elected officials in their decisions. In your name we pray, amen.
Blue and white.
The religion is true life of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
This first order of business will be approval of amendments. Do we approve of amendments without reading?
Second.
Second, I'm praying to say aye. Aye, the opposed, nay, the ayes have it. By the way, Mr. Lyda has been, he's paid for me to take optioneering lessons, so hopefully we'll get to him. First in the report section, we have Commissioner David Carrington from Jefferson County Commission.
Thanks, Commissioners, and Mr. President. A little more than eight years ago, I stood before this body not knowing what I was asking for and y'all rewarded me with eight years on the Jefferson County Commission. It's been quite a ride. I surely have a fondness in my heart for the city of Hoover. My wife was a principal at the Rocky Ridge Elementary and during that time she was named the National Distinched Principal of the Year representing Hoover, and so that's always a point of pride for me. But my wife has two passions in her life. One is educating children. Mike's kids went through Rocky Ridge and Shelley was very involved, Derek, I know you were very involved as well on the school board. And the second thing she had a passion for was children with special needs. And I'm here today representing the council, the commission. Mayor, will you come for it? You want me to do this for the council president?
I'd like to do it for all of us.
Well, I'll just pass it down. Y'all just take one-sixth of it, okay? Jefferson County Commission has a limited amount of discretionary monies that a sponsoring commissioner can grant to cities, fire districts, school boards, R-501(c)(3)'s. And it was my distinct honor, as my last recommendation to the commission, that we contribute the remaining monies in my discretionary account for the inclusive park, floor park, that will be not only for children without special needs, children with special needs, so that they can play together and grow together. I just want to compliment this city for the vision you had on that project. Thank you.
You know, part of these, you see, right? Yeah. Jim, Mr. Stevens. Sure, sure. I didn't address you yet. You look like you're ready to go park guard here. You know, Mark Hunt? Best forty million dollars you've ever got. As y'all know, Mr. Carrington's gonna be leaving public service after the next election. He took Jefferson County, he and President Stevens took Jefferson County when it was going through some very hard times and directed its way to where it's retained its glory. And I do both. And I just would like to add, the county has been very generous to us in terms of playground. They are a significant contributor. You know, we had about eight hundred thousand invested ourselves and went out to raise the other one point two million. And with this check and of course what they had already committed, we are probably like a hundred thousand dollars away, very, very close to getting that. We appreciate it. And it's for the people of Jefferson County as well, and we're excited about it for our city. And I do appreciate you gentlemen being for us, certainly what you've done over your career, so we're gonna miss you a lot. Thank you. There's a moment to say, hey, here's where. That. Do I move on? Um, yes, sir. Of course, I have one other thing I was gonna add, and Shelby County has that as well. So it's gonna be Jefferson, Shelby, Tuscaloosa, anybody, anybody that wants to travel there, if they wanna come up, I'll. Next. Interesting what, just to tell you some of the conversation that we picked up on social media as this was being announced, there were moms talking back and forth and one describing the other, and she said, "This is only three hours away. We can go to Hoover." I thought that's just phenomenal. So we are, we're certainly excited and I thank y'all again for the support of it. Next, mayor has proclamation for American Pharmacist Month. Yes, sir. We have a number of pharmacists here. We'd love for them to come down. Kalen Davis, Cody Fuller, Abby Bradley, Kendra Ayers, Caitlin Bowman, and Michelle Bobb. These are all third-year students. And our second year, Seth Hinkle, Ryan Oakley, Derek Lewis, and Mason Sykes. And then our first year, where's our rookie team, Reggie? Man Elliott, Chelsea Daigle, and Haley Galloway. Welcome. And we do have a proclamation for them, so Mr. City Attorney.
Whereas pharmacy is one of the oldest of the health professions concerned with the health and well-being of all people. And whereas pharmacists are specifically educated with a focus and level of expertise on medication therapy, are ideally suited to work collaboratively with other healthcare providers and patients to improve medication use and outcomes by providing services through medication therapy management. And whereas it is important to promote the profession of pharmacy as an essential healthcare provider, and whereas pharmacists provide both expertise and accessibility which are crucial to patients fully optimizing access to medications that are not self-administered, such as but not limited to immunizations. And whereas the American Pharmacists Association and Alabama Pharmacists Association have proclaimed October as American Pharmacist Month with the theme Know Your Medicine, Know Your Pharmacy, resolved that I, Mayor Frank Broketo, designate the month of October 2018 as American Pharmacist Month, Know Your Medicine, Know Your Pharmacy.
Little story for you in school. I have a son-in-law that graduated from San Francisco and he was dating my daughter. And one of the first times he met me, he said, "Mr. Smith, you know what they call the guy that graduates last in his year?" I said, "What, Daniel?" He said, "Doctor." Fortunately, he did a little better than that. Next, we have Robin Kirstenberg and Sarah Perry and Herb Patterson to talk about this. This is a new function, isn't it? First year?
First year.
Fifty-fifth anniversary of his first birthday.
We are here to invite everyone to fifty-fifth annual Wood Park Art Show, which is this Saturday, October sixth, from nine until five. As always, it is a free event, parking at various locations in the Wood Park area with free consultations and from the show, free presentation show. Over a hundred and forty artists from eleven states, thirty-eight of us are new artists. We'll have a food truck alley this year between two or three vendors. There will be additional seating with picnic tables and hay bales. Our show judge is the new board director for the Rockingham Museum of Art, who will be choosing the winner, so twelve awards, so twelve thousand dollars in prizes. Auburn fans have no excuse to not attend, your game isn't until six-thirty. And Alabama fans can come before and after the eleven-thirty event. It's gonna be a beautiful day to support the art town, a wonderful community. We would like to thank the mayor's office, city council members, and this year, we hope for continued support, and are very thankful for the partnership. And we have, um...
I'm Herb Patterson, from the board. And I had one more announcement about the Blood Park Art Show. Beginning this fall, we were appointed Alabama bicentennial event. We're sanctioned event for the bicentennial celebration. And we'll be doing that all year next year, and we hope to get a grant from that committee. And we've already voted on our board, if we get that grant, we will be giving a major award to an artist from Alabama at the show. We will be, and we will be helping our scholarship fund that we give annually to the Hoover, a student from a Hoover high school, a Hoover high school. And also, we have a permanent collection that we display all over the municipal areas and downtown Birmingham, all over Hoover and Shelby County. And it needs maintenance all the time, too. So appreciate the mayor met with me and he gave me some ideas about who to get on the committee. You're gonna have a bicentennial committee, you don't have one yet. And Mr. Arnold Singer from the Hoover Historical Association, the president of that, is helping me to find committee members. We're excited about that.
There's Arnold now. There you are. I told him where you were sitting. All right, now we're gonna get into some business. Mr. Corley, Resolution fifty-eight seventy-two eighteen. All right, we have a motion with trial.
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution fifty-eight seventy-two eighteen.
Second.
Motion second. I'll in favor say aye. Aye, the opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-eight seventy-three eighteen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute amendment to renewal of health services agreement between UCHC, Inc., the city of Hoover, Division inmate health care, municipal jail to extend term to the agreement from October first, 2018 to September thirty, 2018. Move to approve Resolution fifty-eight seventy-three eighteen.
Second.
Motion second. XO Aldaka explained Thursday night that this is just a continuation of the health, healthcare services provided to the residents of the Hoover City Jail. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing none, I'll in favor say aye. Aye, the opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-eight seventy-four eighteen, I believe we've got a request to continue.
Mr. President, I move to continue Resolution fifty-eight seventy-four eighteen.
Second.
Should I take specific or call the chair?
Call the chair.
Any questions from the council? I'll in favor say aye. Aye, the opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-eight seventy-five eighteen, Mr. Corley. Fifty-eight seventy.
Properties located at the following addresses have an overabundance of grass and weeds present there on and present a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the city of Hoover. Ten seventeen, Richwater Park Drive, thirty-seven oh two, James Silt Terrace. This resolution declares the overabundance of grass and weeds present on the above properties as public nuisances towards the abandonment thereof and as provided under Alabama law. Mr. President, I move for approval of Resolution fifty-eight seventy-five eighteen.
Second.
Motion second. Mr. Mack.
Bring us up to date. Yes, sir. We have the two properties you see here, the photos we're taking today, both of them mean our alterations being overgrown, so this is the first hearing and then we'll be back in three weeks. I hope we're all ready for it.
So you say they're in compliance or not?
They're not in compliance.
Okay, very good. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience, anyone here representing those properties? I'm not hearing or seeing any. I'll in favor say aye. Aye, the opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-eight seventy-six eighteen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes installation of fire hydrants in Black Ridge basement four, subterranean. Move to approve Resolution fifty-eight seventy-six eighteen.
Second.
Motion second. Apparently explained on Thursday that these are just your normal everyday fire hydrants in the Angel in Black Ridge. And that's the, council has any questions?
Just one quick question, chief, and maybe it's not appropriate times, you should clear it up. Have we modified and got that cleared up as far as the ayes on the five vintages?
We have.
Okay, so that's quick. Okay, thank you.
Anything you, if it's on you, if it's right there.
I think so. Anything else from the council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, I'll in favor say aye. Aye, the opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Next, we're gonna have the second reading of ordinance eighteen dash two four zero one. And I have a note here that is being requested to continue this item.
Mr. President, I'll move to continue ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four oh one of the call of the chair.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the council? Just going back and crossing the t's and dotting the i's. I'll in favor say aye. Aye, the opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Item twelve, the first reading of ordinance eighteen dash two four oh six, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance rearranges, alters, and extends the city's corporate limits to include property located at eight fifty-three Willow Oak Drive, the old River Chase Middle School owned by the Hoover City Board of Education. As shown in the map attached to the ordinance, this is phase one of a multi-stage certification. Second reading of this item and its consideration for adoption will be on Monday, October fifteenth, 2018.
Any questions from the council? Item thirteen is gonna be the set hearings for Monday, November fifth, here in the council chambers at six o'clock. First, we have Mr. Rasmussen Gonzalez Strength Associates requesting the following on property located at twenty-three eleven John Hawkins Parkway owned by Kirk, Kirkimer M. Correct and Zone C-one Neighborhood Shopping District. First to amend the zoning conditions regarding a building to all height and roof requirements and additional use approval for a pet suite resort, allowing provisions of various services to pets, including grooming, nutrition, sporting, and other specialized services. That will be a public hearing. I know, Mr. Beavers, you had talked about a first reading. Obviously, we're really not gonna have a first reading, but I think if you brought anything you would like to share with us, it would give us time to think about it before November fifth, so we can... I think you brought the whole fight.
Well, we, when I spoke, good evening, Charlie Beavers here, on behalf of the applicant for these two matters. And we're prepared to present as much as you would like. We understood from a conversation, hopefully correctly, that you would like a full presentation tonight.
Well, normally them first readings we do, but I realize now that there isn't a first reading, but I would rather we see it before the day we're gonna be expected to vote on. Okay, so let's go ahead.
Very good. Happy to do that. I have several folks with me here to help in the presentation. Again, we can provide as much as you would like to hear about it, and we're prepared to give a full presentation. John Rasmussen, who is our civil engineer for the site, who is a partner of Gonzalez Strength Associates. Also, we have Robin Gregory, also with Gonzalez, who is an architect, a landscape architect. And also Gary Behrens, who is an environmental scientist with Spectrum Environmental, they performed a sound study in respect of property. And I take it I'm addressing both items that you're now, they're all kind of one same. And we've been through border zoning adjustment for some advances that have been granted with respect to the site. We've been in provision of planning condition as well. We have dropped a petition to allow certain type of siding that's not allowed under some covenants, agreed, put in brick. Been through a lot of changes and reiterations of the development plan as we have gone through this process with staff and others in the area to get to the point where we are right now. What we would like to do in the presentation is introduce you to pet suites, so you'll know who they are, see what they do, and then introduce you to the site, ensure you all have received the package, perhaps you haven't had a chance to look at. Would also like to summarize for you the results of a sound study. One of the things we did through several hearings we've been through thus far, we requested the sound study, and we had the results of that and we represent that as well. And then to talk a little bit about the zoning and things that could go there as opposed to what is being proposed here. So with that, I may, I'd call John Rasmussen and Robin Gregory to introduce the developer and/or the user of the site.
Thank you. My name is John Rasmussen. I'm the civil engineer on the project, Gonzalez Strength, twenty-one seventy-six Parkway Lake Drive. So at the beginning, I just wanna kinda like run you through the highlights of what pet suite is, what their, you know, main purpose is, their functionality of. Essentially, they ward and groom and other things, basically, dogs and cats. This is the high-end, upscale, top-of-line, so to speak, of the place where you wanna take your pet, be very well pampered. Of course, a couple of the front pictures here to show the interior. Mainly, what I wanted to kinda like point out right here in front, the very top picture you'll see, there is a, as you walk into the, into the facility, there is a, there's a separation there behind the front where you drop your pet off. And so there's a, there's a barrier there between the rest of the pets that are inside the facility. So basically, when you open up the door, you don't let out a bunch of noise from the pets that are inside the building at any time. Down below, you'll see that's an actual pet suite. It's not, it's not a kiln. This is about a six-foot by eight-foot suite, if you will. Each suite has a bed, each suite has a TV. They're very well pampered, they even have a, they even have a picture to keep them entertained. And each wall is separated by, or each side of the suite is separated by a block wall. So the pets don't see each other while they're inside the suite, which, you know, keeps them obviously more in tune with not being so interested in each other. They have an indoor play area. They also have an outdoor component play area. The outdoor component play area essentially is gonna be surrounded by a seven-foot-high PVC prophecy fence. So there's no, it's totally opaque, so there's no visibility or translucency from the interior to the exterior, so pets can't see beyond the fence. So as we kinda expand outside the building footprint, or outside of the building itself, the front of the building on our site is, is facing toward the south. So this is the vicinity mound, Highway one fifty is running through here. So it's, the site is situated on the westbound side of Highway one fifty, between CVS. And this right here is the UAB facility and the volume stage right here, this is South Shades Crest. So it's about two-tenths of a mile back east of the South Shades Crest intersection. The site is, used to be wooded years back, now it was stripped, and so you pretty much just have a clear sight right now. This is the site plan. The front of the facility itself is actually right here. That's where you can bring your pets in, in and out, right here. The, the way we have chosen to lay out this facility on this piece of property, which property is about two acres in size, the way we laid it out was to obviously put the front, the front component of the facility is the outdoor play area. We wanted to put that opposite of the neighborhood, that is behind the facility, and have it facing toward one feet. So the facility itself is the, the building, the enclosed building component, it's about fourteen thousand two hundred and forty square feet. It's roughly eight feet deep and a hundred and seventy-eight feet wide. Access to one fifty is one, one spot right here, obviously. And as far as the intense, as far as the parking on the facility, the intensity is really low, so we only have, per code, we only need actually less than twenty parking spaces. So we have a very, very low intense parking matter with our, with our site compared to, you know, a five-o ratio that should be required for with a retail center. This is a great plan. I don't wanna go into the specifics, but one, one thing I wanted to point out that's major about this site is that from Highway one fifty, which is here, to the back of the side, there's about twenty-plus feet of elevation difference. So what, we're laying out the grades on this side, laying out the bent, the building, the finished floor of the building per the zoning ordinance that's posed on the property can only be four feet higher than Highway one fifty. So the building's gonna be essentially flat with the highway, which actually helps the way this site is laid out because it, as, behind the side, there's a residential neighborhood. And so in order for us, what helps us is to have that site as low as we can, so that we're not directly level in elevation with the folks behind it. And, and so that's what we've accomplished here is that we have at between fifteen and sixteen vertical feet of separation from the back of the yards of the adjoining neighborhood to our finished floor of the building. The back of the building itself is completely unused. There is one exit door, that's only for building code or fire code. There's no public, there's no activity behind the building, there's no loading or unloading like you might get if you had a retail center or some sort of shops behind the building itself. We have a very well-established buffer that we are, well-established buffer that we have designed as part of our plans that Robert, when he gets up here to landscape architect, will tell you a little bit about. But our main focus is to, is to buffer our, not have any, our visi- But our main focus is to, is to buffer our, our, not have any, our visibility, to decrease the visibility, decrease any kind of ambience between our site and the neighborhood behind us. And that's what, by lowering this site down to about the elevation of the highway, that's, that's, I think that's a good, I think that's a good, uh, component to try to make that happen. So with that said, this is the landscape plan. I'll let Robin get up here to kind of give you the highlights on it.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm Robin Gregory, I'm the landscape architect, and, uh, thank you for having me tonight. Uh, we want to talk a little bit about the landscape plan, the extensive landscaping we've got. Uh, these are evergreen trees. And we'll have the, the back, uh, adjoining area up at the very top of the, the top of the slope is existing fence. And right adjacent to the fence, we've got a staggered row of evergreen trees, magnolia trees, to the double O here. They go all the way down the length of the property. And then adjacent to that, coming in those little areas between that, or wax mulch, uh, evergreens rather, it's quite tall. And then we have about six rows in this area here, which is, this is a solid mass, so we have six staggered rows of lawnmower pine trees. And that wraps around the building all the way down through this entire area over here. We've also met with Jim Pacco, a neighbor over in this area here, to help us sign. And at this location, we've added, uh, more magnolias here and a row back here. So we have that consistent double O of magnolias all the way across the back, uh, that are full to the ground. Uh, the magnolias would be nine feet all day long, and then over one to two feet probably through here, uh, the pine trees probably about two feet through here. So over time, that would be a very nice buffer, uh, that is sort of... This shows a little bit cleaner, uh, version of, uh, the landscape plan. You can see how you've got the double O here. We've also sprinkled in some deciduous trees to give a little bit more of a forced type of look. So this, uh, allow this to just mature over time. Sprinkling in the deciduous tree, native deciduous trees, but the rest of the evergreen trees will create a great buffer. This is a section here, uh, showing the existing fence, uh, the magnolias, lawnmower pines. And as John had said, there's about sixty-foot range from the bottom here all the way up to the top. Uh, the distance from the fence line all the way to the building is about seventy-four feet. And then you have another eighty feet back over to the area, and then I think there's another twenty, thirty feet over to the play area. So you have a substantial area from just the edge of the property and the, and the property line here all the way to the play area on the, on the side.
Sir, that's the main body of the building, correct? Distance is about eighty feet.
Right across here.
Eighty feet. Without that back left corner seems to be a lot more proximate to the neighbor behind us.
It's about forty-five feet.
Forty-five feet.
Yeah. But this distance here, seventy-four feet, and you see the building is scaled with that property line here, so straight flush seventy-four feet, eighty feet to get to outdoor play area. So this shows wax mulch, existing fence, the magnolias, native deciduous trees that we've sprinkled in, and multiple rows of pine trees, lawnmower pine trees. So, uh, the evergreen magnolias grow all the way to the ground, uh, fill in the area, and then the lawnmower pines will grow very fast. And so, uh, that's on that slope here, and so this will fill it very nicely. And then adjacent to the building, we have some elm trees here as well. Uh, these will be putting about twelve, fourteen feet on. Uh, this is a shovel in at the front, one fifty. Uh, you can see the building here in the back. Uh, we've got great rows of deciduous trees here. Encore is at the, at the base of this, so we'll have a very nice looking, uh, multitudes on color type in for installation. We'll have some evergreens on the interior. So I'll turn that over to John.
A couple of more points. Um, when you saw the elevation you could see from one fifty, it showed, uh, architectural metal, vertical panels, that will be great now. That's one change. Uh, this building, uh, the investment of this site, this building will be between three and a half and four million dollars. It's a very substantial investment for Pet Suites folks. Right now, um, you can put up the, the landscape, which, um, that whole area right there is, if you've driven by there and paid attention to, it's wide open. There's a, there's, there are no trees. Unfortunately, the, uh, gentleman who had it back in oh-one when it was owned decided to clear it. And, um, and it's, it's just wide open. So those houses are wide open at one fifty right there. Uh, this, uh, development, which will be low, was indicated, and below the site plane from those houses. And then with landscaping at the top of the slope, and all that landscaping along that back edge is at, at the top of the slope. So it's, it's going to extend far above what you can see in the building all the way around, uh, providing, uh, a screen visually. And, uh, it will help, we believe, with, uh, the noise level that they already are now experiencing from the enterprises that are up and down one fifty. And from one fifty itself, it's probably the most aggressive land use that there is out there, the road, road itself. Um, you, you notice, uh, there's no drive or loading area or anything in the, what I'm calling the back of the building. It's really kind of a side of the building because they enter, you know, from that left side there. Yeah, right in there. Uh, when we were first meeting the staff, um, they said because of the length of that building, we would have to have a drive back there and open that up in order to get fire trucks back to the point, probably approximately halfway across the back of that building. But if we sprinkle the building, if the client would sprinkle the building, that would not be necessary to also help prevent having to have a road around the front. So save the ability to landscape across the entire back, across the entire front, and not have that activity. We think that's a great benefit to the neighborhood because property is known to C one. There are multiple uses that could be made of that, uh, and which could have. There are no restrictions with respect to entry in the rear, access in the rear, loading, unloading. Uh, no restrictions with respect to drive-throughs, uh, with, with order boxes and the like, uh, that you could have on a, a number of the uses that are permitted there. So we, we try to pay attention to the things that could be there and try to present something that would be, um, a great benefit, we think, to, to, to the neighborhood in that regard. Um, the one thing I'm making to clarify, if you can go back to the, uh, shot of the building from the front door. Well, I tell you what, you have to go right there. That, uh, that green appendage there with the pile, that's, we're not having that. That's not going to be, they dropped that during the process. Uh, wanted to keep that low. One of the requests that we have is to, uh, allow the flat roof with a parapet wall that would extend beyond the, the flat roof to hide a screen. Uh, any mechanical that's on the roof in lieu of a hip roof, which the zoning conditions now require. And so we think that's a better situation for everybody. It allows the site to be managed better, um, and it, it actually lowers the building below what a hip roof would be. So that's our request basically for a zoning change. The other request is for conditional use approval until that is particularly used in what is already in C ones. So, just a little bit of history. Uh, in oh-one, this property, um, the, the lots, you can go back to the picture that shows the houses, um, where those houses are that are, that are next to, um, the boarding site. Those lots used to go all the way to one fifty, and they were undeveloped. So you had a, a cul-de-sac road that goes, there were some houses on the, on the left side and on the right side next to this property. It was just baking all the way to one fifty. And the property owner at the time of those lots, uh, went through a process, got the part that we're dealing with now, zone C one. And a part of that deal was that the remaining lots that were created on the right side of the road, adjacent part of the property on the resident property, uh, was to be raised in elevation and built on before anything got built on here. So the property's been zoned like that for a long time to C one, and those houses were developed, you know, with that in mind is, is, is a part of what would happen down the, down the line. Um, I think, uh, next, if I, I may spend just a few minutes on the sound study, provide you with a, a bit of a, a summary. And I think, hopefully, the, the, there are two reports that will be in your packages when you have a chance to review those before the next meeting. Um, you could put, uh, up there, Mr. Behrens will come up here in a second and deal with that. But I just want to provide a couple of summaries from, from this sound study that I thought were particularly crucial. One is at night, uh, the, the sound reading monitors and the folks that were, that were up around, uh, uh, well, in the back of, they did a, they did a study of an existing site, uh, for Pet Suites in Roswell, Georgia. That site is next to residential, similar to this, but actually the residential's closer than here. They don't have a lot of elements that we do have that would make it very favorable. But, um, the, the, there's no discernible noise coming out of that building at night at all. You can't hear anything. You walk around, you don't hear them at all. Uh, during the day, the sound levels are within the level of the ambient noise of traffic and the like, any sound that you might hear from dogs in and making noise in the play area. Those are the two big takeaways that I took from, from the study. I had one other one as well. Um, the ambient noise during the hours in which there were dogs in the play area, and the ambient noise, or the noise level in general, the decibels, uh, was the same whether there were dogs in the play area or no dogs in the play area, which would indicate it just didn't raise the noise, the volume and the noise level. But I will let Mr. Behrens come and, um, make a presentation about the study that they did and how they did it, and of course, we all can answer your question.
Thanks, Gary Behrens, Spectrum Environmental, B five spectrum code, Alabaster Alabama. Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me to continue, uh, to make this presentation. Lee, I know Mr. Shaw's heard this one, remember, repeat this, and I kind of, and make everybody else aware of, uh, well, look at what we did. Spectrum Environmental was tasked with, uh, conducting a noise study on the existing Pet Suites Resort Facility located in Roswell, Georgia, as Mr. Beers indicated. We went up and we set up instruments at the facility.
Sir, if you could just take a little closer to my camera, we've got a hundred thousand people watching at home.
Roger that. This is an example of, this is the facility we did in Roswell, Georgia. This is the southwest. This is the southwest number three point, closer to the residential area. You see this point right here where the pointer is? That's approximately thirty, twenty-five to thirty feet from our closest monitor. There's a residence located there. Uh, and just, I'll run a couple of numbers past you on that. The monitor at that location indicated a maximum of eighty-four decibels. That was an average of eighty-four decibels. A mean of fifty-five, approximately fifty-five decibels, and this will all be in your package that you receive. And we had a memorable sound of forty-six decibels at that level. So, normal human speech is approximately sixty-decibel level. Uh, standard TV in a living room is around seventy-decibels. So that kind of gives you an idea of, of the sound. And as Mr. Beers indicated, when we were doing the study in Roswell, Georgia, you don't need to be aware that we manned that site from three-thirty in the afternoon during the week. It was not normal weekend. Three-thirty in the afternoon until the following day at two-thirty in the afternoon. So myself and another gentleman were there basically the whole time. And as Mr. Beers indicated, one of the things that was important to note, when the Pet Suites Resort brought the animals in for the evening feeding, approximately five-thirty in the evening, the time the dogs went inside and were fed from six PM at night until approximately six fifteen the next morning, there was no audible dogs heard at all from that facility. And we know that because I was there during that full-time period. And I actually pulled about a twenty-four-hour shift that day. Uh, it's not picked up on the monitors, so, but as we said, the local traffic we went by, the tractor trailers and things were in the eighty, eighty to ninety range. If a, if a fire engine, if a fire station right across the street from our facility, fire station, they jumped up to about ninety-five to a hundred decibels. Uh, but the point I'm making is as close as that facility is to the residences there, there was no sound observed greater than ambient noise in the seventy to eighty range, or the seventy, seventy-five range.
Sir, what happened after that six fifteen time?
Six, six fifteen in the morning?
Yes, sir.
At six fifteen in the morning, when the first employee from Pet Suites came in and opened the door at six fifteen, I don't, I don't know if you have dogs, but a dog has a bio clock that is awesome. They will wake you up at a certain time, and they are used to a certain time. I mean, that, if you come in at six fifteen in the morning for the morning feed, let them out. And as soon as that person walked through the door, they would start to bark. And you could hear that audible barking from outside when the door opened. When the door was closed, you could not hear the dogs barking inside of the facility. And then throughout the day, the dogs were not, did not occupy the... This area, this area here is where the outdoor play area is at that facility. The dogs were not in that play area from the time they finished breakfast until the end of the day. They would bring out a few dogs at a time, let them run around and play, and then take them back inside, then bring out another rounds. But it was not, the dogs did not occupy that area constantly throughout the day.
What time did they start bringing the dogs?
Approximately seven-thirty, eight o'clock in the morning.
So most people have gotten up at that time?
Yes, sir. And, and now, as I indicated, during the day, yes, and Mr. Shaw's heard this before, you could hear dogs barking. However, the sound of the ambient trucks, vehicles, just the movement in the area overwhelmed the sound of the dogs, just at the sound of them. That's all I've got, gentlemen. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you. And if I may just in, um, in summary, say that, um, this site in Roswell is, is similar to this, to old site in Hoover, and it has residential in the area. Um, it is different in that Roswell is on the same level, the houses and the play area are on the same level. The building is not situated between the play area and the houses, and there's no landscaping, uh, of any significance between the houses and the play area. In Hoover, we have much greater business. We have lower in the building, put the play area on the other side, um, and have a significant amount of landscape. Um, oh, we don't know how to present the issue about what people might hear, uh, during the day, perhaps, if they're out in the yard or something, uh, other than what we presented here, and what you just might expect based on the landscaping and what you normally will hear inside your house or if you're out in the yard and things your way. Uh, if, we, we thought, well, what else can we do? If anybody has a question about that, and we would invite you, if you want to take a, a field trip to Roswell, Georgia, drive over or see if somebody wants to go over, ask Mac. It would be too bad a thing if I offered, see if y'all wanted to send Mac over, leave him a port. But, uh, however y'all want to do it, you take a listen. Um, it, uh, we're not going to say that you can't hear a dog bark from time to time, but they're not out there all the time. You know, like a dog gets upset about something, barking, barking, barking. That, we understand is not happening. Yelps occasionally here and there, and, um, and, and we understand it not to be intrusive. We wouldn't want to bring anything to be intrusive. But if you're concerned about that, one, go and take a listen. Uh, we, you know, we invite you to do that. Um... I believe that, I believe that covers, uh, the presentation. If you have, but we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, I, I, um, I will mention that if, if the planning commission, they, they wanted an amendment to, uh, the normal process of operation there to prohibit, um, late time in the area that is what I would call the back of the building. And, and our folks have agreed to that. Um, if you could put the site plan up one time. Uh, but the green, yeah. Um, but agreeing, yeah. Go along in, you see that short end on, on the back. Um, they had that available for small groups, maybe have a little play or rest, and they agreed not to do that, uh, here, uh, as a recommendation on the planning commission measures. Well, I believe that, that covers it. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. President, Mr. Peters, first and foremost, your clients be committed for their willingness or the desire to come and invest this kind of money in the city of Hoover. We spent a good bit of the last hour talking about quality of life, and this is the type of business that, being a pet owner, I know what kind of demand there is for this.
Yeah.
And so we would add to the quality of life and something unique on Highway one fifty. I will say too, that we also paid attention to the news. We know this came with a favorable recommendation of planning zoning, but just about a smidge, I think it was a four-three vote. And I anticipate on November fifth, when this body gathers and hears this case, we'll hear from those residents there, just as we did at planning zoning. So, you know, uh, we like win-wins, and I know you too in your business. Does your client look at any other properties in the general vicinity that might be another option before we get to November fifth? Is that even an option? I'll say, one fifty's not all to all built down. There's some other properties along there that, in my opinion, would make much better locations for this. Not that that's why we're here, we're here to look at this particular piece by itself, but have y'all considered other locations?
Uh, it's mine, and I'll keep, I'll be happy to verify and ask specifically, but that's kind of been raised here and there. Um, and they've indicated they had somebody searching, you know, for a spot that would work well for them, and this is what they found. Now, whether there are others potentially in, in the area, um, I, I can see what they looked at, see what the other opportunities are, but they're not aware of any in particular, um, based on my latest conversations with them. But I'll also say that, that the objection would be whether dogs barking would be intrusive. And I understand that. I mean, that's a valid, valid question, and you're absolutely correct in being concerned about that. And again, uh, we're told it, it is. The only way I know to really settle that is to go have a listen. I've had it right over there with somebody, because you might want to sneak up on them, you know, and make sure they don't know you're coming, so they put all the dogs in. And, but, I don't think they would do that, but, uh, you know, if you're worried about it. So, I, I think that's the, that to me is the, the way it resolves this. And I would say this, this has been a tough site. Uh, if, if you all know, this has been vacant for many, many years. And so the owner very much feels like this is the only site appropriate, you know, of Hoover for it. The seller, who we don't represent, he represents the developer, but, uh, would think, you know, if this is right, it's good, and it's not intrusive, then, then please, please prove it. And so, um, and, and it either gets built with something that could be a lot worse or, or it doesn't get built, which we think is, is worse as well, so. But that's a valid question I'll ask, and, and I would suggest, if the issue is barking, which I think is probably the only one we've got now, the only way I know resolves this is to take a visit.
Mayor, does two dollars per night with Chelsea, that added in on?
They have one, no problem.
Mr. President, I, I can just comment on the, um, ob- obviously, this was very close voted planning and zoning, and I was on the no sign. Um, this is probably one of the longest, uh, most continued, the most effort I've seen put into it by an applicant. Um, and I'd echo Mr. Wyatt's, uh, this is a cool business, um, it's the kind of amenity you want in Hoover. Um, you've all have been extremely over-the-top responsive, um, through a long process. I, I would almost say, Mr. President, that they've been dogging in that facility during the, a very long process. Um, however, this is a, this is a one-way street. If we approved this despite, um, Mr. Martin put, except very copious amounts of restrictions in the conditional use. And I, but even then, looking at that in an effort to protect the neighborhood, I'm not sure how we would ever unbuilt this or say, well, can't do it anymore, sorry. You know, I mean, with that much investment, it's, it's a one-way thing. We're committing to you that we support this and we are giving you conditional use. So I don't see a way to, to reel this back in if it doesn't work right.
Agreed with that. As you've admitted before.
Yeah, right. And so, so the, the big issue here that we kept coming across was, I mean, the issue of odor and some of these other things, I think, were addressed from the most part. There's still some concerns about that. And that's part of the long process that's going on. But it's still, there's so many anecdotal stories and, and of, of dogs barking at other facilities that you can hear all around the surrounding area. And to be looking at some of the other facilities, the, the one facility you focused on, to your credit, was the one that was closest to a residential area. However, so many other of your other facilities were at airports or next to trucking facilities or interstate exchanges or something that wasn't close to, to residential. So it's a little bit hard, because we, we might be able to go out there. I will argue with a little bit. I think your other example is not nearly as close to so many houses as, as this facility. So what we're getting past is, is the people that live at the anecdotal understanding that dogs bark, and dogs bark a lot, and, and we have to get past that and somehow verify that, that, yeah, you might hear something, but, but my issue with the sound study was that it consistently used, uh, the, the white noise of a, um, uh, the, the, the traffic is kind of a benchmark. It, it, talking about the, the level of, if I sat here and I bark, 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 bark during the meeting, that's a voice level, but it can get annoying after a while. In fact, I think sometimes this be talking anyway, it's annoying, so it's something else. But the, um, uh, that's the difficulty for me, is we switch back and forth and how, because that's really what it comes down to, is if you're going to hear dogs barking a lot, that's the quality of life factor, I mean, it's a deal, all the other things. So I, I, I still wasn't satisfied with the sound study to, to guarantee or at least mitigate what the impact, what, and we saw that, and, I mean, I think it's a great sound study, and obviously, I don't know what you're doing, but, uh, but you can hear dogs. I still don't know how much, you know, e- every time we go to how much we're hearing, it's like, well, it's, it's not as much as the traffic. Well, you could, you could have some pretty loud dogs, and it'd be less than the traffic, and still ruin their ability to go outside and enjoy an afternoon if they bark or whatever. So that was kind of my, my thought process and, and my no vote. I still want to see, and maybe it is worth the, I mean, a public service driving around listening, yeah? I mean, that, that's a whole, uh, whole other point. Maybe we could call the city, maybe we could find something. I, I didn't get to that in the planning and zoning process.
Well, we may have to go down that road, if you want to try.
Yeah, we have to somewhere, I mean, the anecdotal evidence is too strong for people who've experienced these types of facilities where it's very loud to, to overcome with, with, even though it's a good scientific sound study, I, I think it kind of skirts around some issues, and I'm not sure that we quite can answer that for the twelve or, or so households that are right there.
Yeah.
And just actually what Mr. Wyatt said, this is, this is such a great facility, so much of a capital investment. I just wish it were somewhere else where it weren't right up next to these houses, because I, I think, I think we have us out there, I mean, for the record, I have a little, like I said, you know, we don't have to go through our dogs, and we have plenty of zoning, and then, uh, we'd love to have a facility like this. She loves, um, uh, she likes football, she'd watch, um, um, and read or whatever, you know, but, um, but anyway, so all that's to say, I, I, it's very difficult, both, because it's an awesome facility, we'd love to have it, but we're putting it right next to all these houses, and we have to make that, and the way this satisfies us, I'm not, I'm still not there.
Understood. I'll just say that the, that, yeah, bark, 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 that would be very annoying. Everything I understand about this facility and how it operates says that that is not what is experienced there. The dogs aren't caged, you know, where they're out there, and they see things running around, and so they bark at them like a dog would in the night. Um, they're, they're supervised, organized, you know, play groups, uh, the, the people out there with them. And so they're, you, you don't have a lot of that kind of barking, and they have some getting, and that sort of thing is my understanding. And that's why I said, I really think the only way to perhaps satisfy a concern like that is to go listen to it, which we are happy to invite folks to do. It either seems good or it isn't, you know? So, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two questions. First, can we get a digital copy of this, the sound study, and we can look at it ahead of time, so we can look at it between now and next meeting, to get a more thorough observation of everything, and then be able to, to reach you guys as well if there are questions as possible.
Sure.
Second question, how many of those neighbors have you met with, and you had to make a determination today, how many of them are happy with where you left that meeting, forward into this next vote?
Before we filed, um, we invited every resident on that street to come to a meeting here. And we had maybe eight or nine or twelve, something like, you know, we had, a bunch of them came. Um, and their concerns are whether, you know, but they had all the concerns we talked about, you know? And, um, uh, when we had our, um, if, if DCA didn't have, really many people show up at all, um, at the first planning commission meeting, I wasn't here, I, I had something else on my parts here, but in the second planning commission meeting, there were a number of them came, and they expressed concern, they want to make sure, you know, that it wasn't, uh, that there wouldn't be the barking, that's, that's the main concern. And then the concern about odor, and then I would say, but in, in the, at the last planning commission meeting, one family came, a husband and wife came. Um, um, you know, I, I hesitate to say what people support or don't support. Um, I, I think, to be fair about it, they would all be concerned about whether they would hear a dog barking. None of them want to hear it barking, and we don't want them to hear it barking. And then that just gets right down to the question, you know, we say they wouldn't. Um, it's hard to prove it. I don't know if this is exactly, have to prove a negative, and I bet, you know, I didn't, I didn't prove that. Go out, and I don't know, the only way I know to do is go out and just, um, and see. But, um, I, I think the, the response was, was varied, you know, some are more concerned than others. We met with Mr. Palco, last, you can't, I had with him, he's that house that's, uh, it's up at the top. He's a good boy, he's away from it, but his yard is wide open. He says he can hear everything that goes on in the UAB place, and you hear people cross the highway and everything. And so we, we agreed to put those four magnolias that are along the top of the line there, that's actually on his property. His fence is skewed where it's off the line, so we can put those on Pet Suites side of the line, but on his property, they agreed sprinkling and maintaining. Um, and then they also agreed, he said he thought he needed more, he wanted some more. So they, there, right below it is another four magnolias that come close to the corner of the building. They're putting in a retaining wall to raise the level there, so it's even with the back, Mr. Palco's backyard, and put more magnolias there. And they're willing to beef that up, you know, as much as they can, as much as you would like, or share in the deep, ask some more thoughts about what could be done if we were to do that. Um, you know, everybody's been cordial, you know, but I think the concern is whether, you know, whether you hear dogs bark. And we just want to try to satisfy you on that issue.
That's fair, and I think that, you know, with, uh, what we typically, what we would typically look at is, you know, if residents come down and end up supporting or end up saying it's a, it's a great thing, I, I mean, you may not receive that, but the fact is your meeting with them and negotiating with them, I think, says a lot, and I would just encourage you to continue that right up until the time where this is voted on.
Happy to do that.
Thanks, sir.
I met Mr. Murphy, he was telling me a minute ago, talking to somebody about his dog barking. And I thought you said your dog don't bark, and he says, not my dog.
John, you're slow.
Um, is that a detention pond that I see on the furthest west part of the property?
Yes.
Who's gonna, who's gonna be, uh, so you can maintain that?
The facility.
Sorry?
The facility.
Pet Suites.
Pet Suites, yes. And, and you talked about outdoor guardrails that are on Highway one fifty. If you notice, there's a, uh, a daycare facility on Highway one fifty, fairly proximal to there, that, uh, they have a playground where the owners ended up putting guardrails. I don't know, maybe you need to talk to them about having a guardrail put in.
Mr. Smith, just as, just as an observation, when I was at the Roswell Pet Suites facility, they had a, uh, a, a detention basin there also, and that detention basin was fenced with a eight-foot cyclone fence.
That's good.
So I, so I, I can't answer that to that a hundred percent, but that was Pet Suites design at the Roswell facility.
Very good. So if you don't, on that, but I would just wonder whether or not your client should pass one of the talks about outdoor guardrails. Is this a franchise or is it corporate?
Corporate, yeah.
And how many do they have?
Um, I know they have several, they have some in Ohio, they have, uh, uh, one in the White Wall, I think there were other in Georgia, but I don't know exactly how many they have. I'm sorry.
It's not a public's, a dog care?
No, no, I don't think so.
Are these all suites? Are these all suites or part of the building in general?
Um, I think they're all suites, as I showed you.
Okay. If you're going to be looking, if your client is looking for any signage variants, I noticed that there was some signage on the one fifty side of the building.
They asked for, um, a signage variance, um, and the DCA granted a variance of about, I think they gave, they gave a twenty percent variance, they asked for something bigger, and it has to do with the signs on the, what they call the front of the building, which is actually a side. They did not ask for a variance on the, um, monument sign that'll be visible from the road, but they, they felt like that was sufficient.
Monument sign?
Yeah.
Unique?
Well.
Unique. Uh, Mr. Martin, what is the setback requirement for C1 between commercial and residential?
Typically, we have a, uh, a fifty-foot buffer in place, landscape buffer, and, uh, I believe what they're showing us is in, uh, in addition to that, beyond that.
What about that corner that's on forty-five feet?
Let me check.
Now, we don't have to have all the answers tonight, but it's something that...
We, we addressed it on the site plan. There's a thirty-foot rear setback, I guess, or, uh, for the building. The building part is thirty-foot, uh, setback, and there's a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer that's required up against, adjacent to residential.
All right, so it's really, it's more than forty-five feet on that back left corner?
Yes, yes, sir.
How did it get from forty-five feet a few minutes ago to what it is now?
It's forty, it's forty-five feet from the building corner to the property.
To the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you don't have enough feet.
We've got a twenty-five-foot buffer, and there's a thirty-foot building setback.
Okay, that gets confusing.
I, I can confirm that it's twenty-five feet for a C1 district.
Very good. All right. Anybody else have any questions? I'm not going to take anything from the public tonight, because that'll come up in the public hearing. Anything else from the council?
I said, um, Mr. Martin, you, you almost said, I listened, it's, it's pretty long, the list of commissioners departments that were, for that, so probably get searching on those.
Thank you all. Mr. Lydon?
I have some deals. Mr. Dan and I would move that those be paid before this presentation.
Second.
Motion, second. Uh, I don't know if they would say aye, uh, as opposed to any, and I said, how much are questions from the council?
Mr. President, I want to say one thing real quick. Um, I was, I was getting lunch today, and I saw the Crown Castle crew putting up one of the small cell poles, and I went out and talked with them. They're typically not the PR representatives for that, uh, for that output, but they proactively commented on how easy Mr. Wyatt and the city staff have been to work with. Indeed, I think, as Wyatt said, we have twenty applications now, and then a bunch, uh, is that many, how many have been approved?
Twenty applications have been received. I give you a count.
It's at least fourteen, I think, is that one. So, um, just to say thank you to the city staff for, for, um, moving this forward very quickly. It's, it's pretty impressive to see how quickly this is moving on, because we only passed the ordinance for three months ago, so thank you all very much.
Anything else from the council?
Mr. Chairman, the Arts Council have a table at the Lumber Church, so just have a seat, sit in and take a short survey. It'll be very important to put its program into effect.
T-shirt? From? Anything else? Anything from the audience? Been good lately. Had, or y'all are just getting tired of us? Which we'll find out in two years.
I'll prepare it, Captain.
There's nothing else? Or, John?